I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, one nation, united in this small, conservative, prosperous, strong. I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening. If you would, please mute or turn off all electronic devices. That would be appreciated. Prior to this meeting, we had a short executive session for contractual issues. At this time, we'll move on to roll call.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mrs. Seker here. Ms. Haas. Ms. Haas.
Present.
Mrs. Moretti here.
Mrs. Pollock here.
Mr. Pollock.
Mr. Pollock is joining virtually. Mr. Plino will read his motions this evening.
Thank you. Mrs. Rinaldi here. Ms. Arno here. Mr. Plino.
Here.
I'm present.
Thank you very much. At this point, we'll open the floor to any audience comments on any of the agenda items. Seeing none, we'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Plino. I have one item, and then I'll turn things over to Mr. Thompson, who's joining us this evening from the Foreman Group. I'd like to provide an update on the Cintigix project. Cintigix is the button that we use, that we will use to either alert that there is a emergency within the school, or broader, if there would be an intruder, to get 911 to respond to the building quickly. We have met with the police chiefs. We have visited Plum School District. We've been in contact. I've been talking to their superintendent about their implementation, some of the things that they've experienced. Our district leadership team met as a complete team today to overview, ask questions, and so forth. We've also met with the union leaders, and now we're in a process of gathering questions. Even though this is something new, we're trying to get questions in advance so that we can get those answered before implementation begins. And thus far, we've received numerous questions. Cintigix has been extremely helpful. Mr. Main has been extremely helpful on the technology end. Officer Downing, Mrs. Stavniak, and Mr. Hevner have done a great job in coordinating those efforts thus far, as well as the entire team. We do believe that this will be extremely helpful in keeping our staff and students and visitors safe in the Allegheny Valley School District. And again, I want to thank the Board of Directors for your support in moving ahead in that endeavor. Thank you. At this time, I will turn things over to Mr. Terry Thompson. He has updates on masonry work and the auditorium restroom and lobby projects, and looking for some authorization for bids.
All right. Thank you for having me here this evening. I just wanted to bring you up to date with where we are. Both projects were submitted for code approval Friday, April 4th, to Springdale Borough. If everything goes well, I expect some kind of response in about a week or so from them. It's normally two to three-week timeframe to get back to the architect. And then if we, if everything is okay, then we would look to go out to bid. Also, we had submitted to Allegheny County Health Department for plumbing approval. We submitted that probably five or six weeks ago. We received approval from them last week. They agreed with our count assessment, so that's good. So we're just waiting on local Springdale Borough code approval to move forward. And with that, we would like to know whether we have authorization from you once we receive code approval to do that and go out to bid on both projects. So that's something we would ask for you to give us an idea tonight on that. We've also been meeting with your team that's deciding how to gain access control to the high school. We've gone back and forth with them over the last week and a half, and have put together a detailed design, so to speak, on meeting their requirements, and we're going to make sure that that's put into the package also. For one set of doors, the right side as you face the building from the outside will have access control. So that's what I have tonight.
Mr. Hoffman, what, what is a sufficient way or appropriate way to authorize for the bids once we receive?
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't require formal action. I mean, unless the board wants to voice opposition to that next step, the architect can simply proceed.
Would it be good to have it in the minutes that we are directing him to do so?
Well, we don't have, we can't have.
Right, right. No, not as a motion.
I understand. It's not binding you to anything. You're not awarding a contract.
Oh, that's correct.
Or soliciting proposals for bids.
Okay.
Is there any objection to continuing to move ahead with the project? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll keep you informed as soon as we get code approvals on them. If we get them independently, we're still going to, like, for example, if we get masonry first, we'll put it out to bid. I'm not going to wait to do that. There are two separate projects, two completely different set of contractors.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Really, it's a statement. I was reading where, were we lucky that we got our permits like we did? Because I read where a lot of them aren't getting them. It's going to be a long wait for them.
Well, I, I haven't heard that, but I spoke to the code official.
No, TRIB, that's what it is. It was in there.
Okay. I spoke to the code official probably a month ago, and he had said to me it was a two- or three-week turnaround generally. They were doing very well. They had a pretty quick turnaround.
I think the government's doing something to hold them.
Well, maybe. I don't know that. It could be government projects.
My school was turned down.
It could be for federal monies.
Yeah, it could be government projects of some sort.
Okay.
But locally, you know, I don't think it's going to take all that long, and hopefully, they agree with how we've designed it. If they have some changes or corrections they want us to make, we'll make them as soon as we can and get it back into them for approval. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Plino, I'll turn things back over to you. All right. We'll move on with bills and payments. Ms. Moretti.
Thank you, Mr. Plino. Item 5.1, recommend the board approve the March 2025 Treasurers Report, the payment of bills, disbursement ledger, and the accounts payable list.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Seker. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Enter your vote selection. Motion passed.
And that concludes bills and payments. Thank you, Mr. Plino.
Thank you. On the consent agenda items, here, I'll entertain a motion to approve all consent.
Motion. Because I can't put him down.
Too far. You.
Well, we can't even see him anyways.
He's, his phone's muted.
I don't see anything.
It doesn't have a camera on.
Do we have to report the vote? Maybe if there's not a vote recorded, you can still move on.
We don't, we have enough for our quorum here.
Yeah, we have to put in this house. Yeah, he came on at some point, and then.
Can I just answer this?
Not president vote. Would you put that, please?
Thank you. Again, I'll have, entertain a motion, recommend the board approve consent agenda items 62 through 615.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Moretti. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the items? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your selection. Move on to operations and finance. Any reports, Mrs. Haas or Mr. Hoffman?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Item 7.2, audit financial statements. Recommend, I'll entertain a motion to recommend the board accept the audited financial statements submitted by Jose Spectimilso and Wood LLC in the accompanying management letter, comments for the year ending June 30th, 2024.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Moretti. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Haas. Any question on the motion? Again, we want to congratulate Dr. Washington on our fine results we got from the audits. Nice, clean audit there. We appreciate that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote. Entertain a motion to recommend the board 7.3 award Springdale High School student parking lot asphalt paving bid to Expert Paving Company LLC in the amount of $61,912. This bid has been reviewed by the solicitor. Let's entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
The move by Ms. Moretti. Second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. Item 7.4, garbage collection and recycle bid. I want to entertain a motion, recommend the board approve a three-year agreement for district garbage collection and recycling services with County Hauling LLC effective July 1st, 2025, pending vendor changes, change request by the solicitor.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Moretti. And a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Seker. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. This time, we move on to 7.5, recommend, entertain a motion, recommend the board award the Athletic General Supply and Custodial Bid for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved.
The move by Ms. Moretti. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Please enter your vote selection. Next, item, item 7.6, the copier services agreement. Recommend, I'll entertain a motion to recommend the board award the copier lease and printing services proposal to Ford Office Technology with a 60-month agreement for copier print leasing and services at a cost of $2,069 per month, plus a .028 per color page, and unlimited black and white copies. This agreement is pending review. Good agreement by our solicitor.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
A second? I'm lost here. Sorry. Any question on the motion?
No. Um, this, is this a necessary agreement to get into with the color copies, or is that like a luxury thing?
This is something that the, specifically, the elementary teachers and our special educators have been asking for, for quite some time. We do believe it is necessary, and we will also look to minimize the exact number of copies that they're able to go through and use as color copies.
And does it include the ink?
Typically, the service agreements do include those type of things. That's why you pay a per-page cost for color.
Does it include the copy agreement? Does it include replenishing color ink for the color portion of the printer?
That's part of the service. Typically, the paper is. Any other question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
One abstention. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. Item 7.7, Colfax Demolition Project Change Order, DC1. I'll entertain a motion to recommend the board approve the extension of time with the new, with the new Colfax Demolition Project completion date of June 6, 2025. There is no additional cost.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Moretti.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hoffman. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. 7.8, USGA Agreement. I want to entertain a motion to recommend the board approve the agreement with the USGA for parking at Acme Townia Elementary from Monday, June 9, 2025, through Sunday, June 15, 2025. The district will receive $5,000 for providing such services. This agreement has been reviewed by our solicitor.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Moretti.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed, please. Enter your vote selection.
Great deal. Great deal.
I know you got seven.
Item 7.9, purchase of doors. I want to entertain a motion to recommend the board approve and replacement of five doors at Springdale Junior Senior High School and Acme Townia Elementary as recommended by the Emergency Management Committee, sending receipt of proposal.
So moved.
The move by Amy Sarno?
Second.
Ms. Sarno. I'm not sure who said it. Second by Ms. Moretti. That's throwing me off. Any question on the motion?
I'll just make a, just a clarification as we discussed this evening, that we are, the board will get clarification on which doors they are and see the whole proposal before purchases are made.
So, so why, why was this here then? We're still going to get, I'm not sure why we have this on there. We're actually not voting on anything just to get bids.
Because what we'd like to do is to move forward if the bids are adequate. So this is, in essence, authorizing the administration to go out and get those prices if they fall within the parameters of the grant.
No, it's, but it doesn't say that on there. Is there a price range that it has on there?
In the motion? No, there's not.
So, of course, that's what I don't understand.
Are you asking for a price range? Is that?
Well, I'm just saying.
I think.
I'm sorry?
I, I'm sorry. I was, I didn't mean to figure out. I was just going to say, I think the confusion is that we're like, it says approving the purchase, whereas like, typically, we'd say like, you know, we're approving like the request for proposals or whatever. I think it, we are just, we're kind of like directing the Emergency Management Committee and the folks who work on that to pursue the purchase, but we're not approving the actual cost of it tonight. It is a little confusing.
Yeah, and, but if you're saying if it falls, we have a grant for it, but we don't anticipate it to fall in the grant.
It should exceed it, but let me, Mrs. Stavniak, do you happen to remember the ballpark price of those five doors? No. So we can get that for you, but you're right. There, you wouldn't be authorizing any dollars.
I would assume we'd have to be voting on this again.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's just access. Let's just put it off. We have numbers. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's right. It doesn't make sense that it's on here.
Well. I'm looking at my board docs. It's showing it's already active. Do you have a vote?
Say, I voted. I'm thinking.
Some folks may have voted in advance.
We can do it amended.
I mean, I don't care.
You can either amend, or if you want to, you can rescind the motion.
We can rescind the motion if we're.
All it's saying is that you're approving the replacement of that.
Yeah, but we're not getting the costs.
The receipt.
I understand. It's just going to cost them both. We're going to have to cost them something.
All right. I entertain a motion to rescind item 7.9, purchase of doors for the Springdale Junior and Senior High School at this time.
I mean, I'm in favor of doing the door, but I mean, I just don't.
Yeah, we just meant, we'll bring it up again. What I'm, I'll entertain a motion just to rescind this 7.9.
So moved.
We've got a motion to rescind. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
And just to clarify, after, that doesn't change that we are still going to pursue this, and then we'll come back to the board with the final vote on.
These doors are priorities that need to be replaced, but there was a question about what are the exact number of doors? What's the price? This tidies things up.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we have a motion in a second. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Don't believe we'll be able to enter that here, right? Are you, okay, sure. All right. At this time, we'll move on to education. Ms. Seker.
Yeah, I have a couple things to report before I read through this, these items. We have the Acme Townia Elementary School hosted the ABC Creates School-to-School STEAM Showcase, where educators from Partner District visited to observe. Ms. Emmerich, Ms. Mellon, and Ms. Titlebaum conducted STEAM-integrated lessons in action with students. The featured lessons were aligned with one or more strands of the Pennsylvania Steel Standards, standards, which are science, technology, engineering, environmental literacy, and sustainability. These standards, you may remember, were updated and adopted by the State Board of Education in January of 2022. These new standards are set to be fully integrated into classroom instruction by the 2025-2026 school year. They also incorporate inquiry-based, hands-on teaching and learning. We also have the Pennsylvania Farm-to-School Network success story featured Acme Townia Elementary's Classroom Garden that told the story of Ms. McCall Emmerich's wonderful sixth-grade classroom. They noted she is a true farm-to-school superstar, and it was a pleasure to hear the many ways she engages her students in gardening and cooking in the classroom. You can find a link to the article in the E-News update. And the Allegheny Valley School District has applied for the pre-K counts continuous grant to assist with funding. The 2025-26 school year program expected to be the same amount of $10,500 per student. The program application included a full-day program with 20 students maximum, of which 10 seats will be pre-K counts qualifying. There are currently 21 applications, 10 students qualified for pre-K counts. And I have that there were, there were several questions regarding, oh, never mind. Let me, let me just move to this. That's good for, for that part. And then I'm going to go ahead and read the 8.2 here, and we're going to recommend the board approve the new course curricula for Springdale Junior Senior High School as listed below, Multimedia 7 curriculum and Multimedia 8.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by?
Ms. Arno.
Ms. Arno? Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
And 8.3, recommend the board approve the Special Education Plan effective July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2028.
Have motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sarno. Any question on the motion?
Since we only got this last week, yeah, that was, you know, I got partway through it, but are there any changes from the one that expired? Like big changes?
I would have to go back and put them side by side. I really couldn't give you an honest answer on that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, is it basically the same, just updated to whatever had to be updated?
I'm unaware of any big changes to the plan or to the program, and those are things we typically talk about.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Okay, and 8.4, recommend the board ratify the memorandum of understanding with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit to support Allegheny Valley School District Invest Practices for Transition to Kindergarten effective January 1, 2025, through December 31, 2025.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any question on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. This time, we'll move on to.
Okay, I wanted to go back a step then, and the, with the new course curricula, we had the childhood development part of that was taken out, and I just wanted to bring this up with the board because the reason that that happened, because some of the resources that were in there were questionable. There were, there were questions about some of the video that was in there called "The Great Sperm Chase" that I actually sent to everybody to look at, and it's necessary to talk about this here because some of us are reading emails, some of us don't, some of us read articles, some of us don't, and we need to be on the same page with it. So there are several things that have happened throughout this year where we're, we're bringing things in, the teachers are bringing things in from online sources without really understanding, you know, what is the approval process here? So it's questioning how, where do we have, where do the guide rails on this? And we kind of talked about this in policy too, because moving into this online realm of, you know, education resources and education resources, technology, everything, it kind of opens that door to teachers just kind of bringing in, hey, this looks good. I'm going to just pull this in. And it's just, you know, to bring it to everybody's attention that this is going to be a topic of discussion, and, you know, talk to Dr. Grasic about it and kind of putting our heads together and how we how we control it a little bit. I mean, obviously, teacher, if, take a look at the video, and some people think they might send it, give it to their second grader, but I don't think it, any of us would really find that appropriate. So I guess it's been around for a while, too. So we just need to be a little more careful, I think, and kind of be, be in tune with how we want to control that.
Do we have any structure in place that the policies cover that in any way?
No. Well, we pulled, we pulled in, at the Policy Committee meeting, we had taken what they had written at the Pine Richland District, and they had a set of guidelines for resource materials, how they need to, number one, align to the lesson plans. They have to align to the standards, or they have to be included in the written lesson plan, and align to the standards, and how, how is that achieving the, the goal of the lesson, you know? But we needed input from Mrs. Vecchio and, and the administration on all of that. So it's something that's, it's a work in progress. So it's to let you know, this is the reason why we need to be, you know, with all of these things happening in education, we need to be a little bit more astute in being aware of what, what's coming in, you know?
I would pose to the part of the process, I mean, you know, it was, oh, yes, Mr. Pollock has joined us. you know, it was, um, oh yes, Mr. Pollock has joined us. Um, you know, I mean, we do approve it. And so, you know, questions came up in the approval process, looking at the curriculum. We questioned it, now it goes back, but this kind of skips ahead to policy, but since you brought it up, then like, um, Mrs. uh, ready to share with me the full minutes, which, whoa, I don't know how long your meetings are, but wow, you guys. You guys cover a lot. You guys cover a lot. Kudos to the hard work. And, you know, as I was reading through those, it, it sounded, there's going to be a lot of discussions, it's going to take a lot of time to look through those. But it did make me kind of think of when we approved curriculum, for example, when we approved CTA, like, there's rubrics that are used to like, you know, select materials and everything. So I think a second look at all of that is worthwhile. And um, I enjoyed reading through the work done of the policy and um, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, and I think that the committee's working together, like Mr. Plino is, you know, started to bring, you know, pairing committees and stuff like that. And Mrs. Vecchio is a very big part of the education and also the policy, because we ask questions in policy. Dr. Grasek goes back to the, the teachers and the administration, you know, how, you know, why is this here? And it's starting to be questioned, and, and that's why I remarked last week, the curriculum format that we got was excellent. You know, listing all the resources and, you know, I, I have to thank, you know, Mrs. Eckert for, you know, enlightening, because since I've been on the board and been coming to board meetings, it's just, you know, rotation, like, we approve this curriculum, you know, and I think it's very nice. And in light of the changes going on in the world today, you know, for the board to be more in tune with what is going on.
I think rubrics and policies would help too, because then it's, it's not us just nitpicking every little, right? Because I do still believe in like, the autonomy of teachers to a certain level and, and be able to select those. But again, if you put those things in place, so by the time it gets to us on a curriculum map, it's gone through that selection process, and then it's not us nitpicking those things, which is what we're kind of doing now, because we kind of have to.
But I think a lot of that has to do with letting the teachers know what we want and the type of things we don't want brought into that. So, you know, you need to kind of work on. And that's probably where the committee needs to come in and, you know, speak with the board, you know, more often on, you know, driving the things that we want to make the teachers aware of, because one person may be offended, the next person isn't. We, we just need to be, you know, more communication pushed out to them as far as, you know, those type of concerns. And, you know, I don't think policy is going to do it alone. It's, you know, being involved with the, the curriculum, the policy that, you know, and, and talking a little bit more about those things and expressing, you know, our concerns and the directions that they were going. So we need to keep the communication level up there.
And I think that's what policy does. It outlines, you know, so it gives you a point. This is what's expected. You know, I know the policy committee really appreciates, we did have a discussion with the board about those policies. I mean, we really investigated, researched, we did our due diligence and talked for three hours.
Yeah, we had nothing as far as guidelines for research.
Right, so everybody's input was very, very much appreciated. So, thank you, Mr. Plino.
Thank you.
If I could fill in a couple of, of gaps here for those who may not really understand what's going on, is this is a human development class. So the topics that were mentioned have to be discussed. Those, that teacher also puts out a permission slip for the video. I believe the question is, is the video of quality that we want to be showing? Kids, we have to meet the standards. So we, we don't have flexibility in doing that. The question is, is the video something we want to use in that class? So just want to make that clear, that the teacher was very transparent in what they were, that they were going to be showing this video. Parents could opt out if they did or didn't, or didn't read or not, I'm not certain of those. But at the crux of it, is, is that video something we want to be showing or not?
I hear that a lot, the opt-out, what if we have an opt-in instead of an opt-out? Because I don't know, you know, like we say, a lot of people don't look on the website, you know, don't know they can opt out, you know, and things like that. Whereas if you say, well, you have to have this slip signed, or you don't sit in that seat and watch this video, I think you'll get more of a response.
Mr. Hoffman actually addressed that question with me a couple of years ago. There was a parent wanted their child to opt out of certain things, or wanted to be alerted as to when they were taught. As it is set up, it is the parent's responsibility to notify the teacher of when that is. If you could imagine a teacher trying to keep track of X amount of kids who have opted in or not, it's more concise and we're able to control at least who has it or not, if we know who's out versus who's in. Because what are we going to ask people to opt in for? And then like, that could envelope into something much bigger. But Matt, would you touch on that a little bit? It was with the students, Bill of Rights, something along those lines.
Well, the regulations currently provide opt-out opportunities for students. And it does put the onus on the parents to exercise that right. That is, I imagine, codified somewhere in one of your policies. I can tell you that some districts have experimented with the opt-in process and have found, to Dr. Grasek's point, they've devoted a lot of time chasing parent responses. So it's not that it couldn't be done, but that it's, you know, consistency and ease of administration. Most places have used the opt-out.
Kids could end up being excluded because their parents don't respond.
And I'm glad that, like, this has generated a really good conversation. So I, I'm thankful that we're talking about these things. I don't know where it'll fall or how it'll, you know, things to be finalized. It's good that we're talking about these things.
And I didn't, said that about communication, wasn't talking about us saying what standards or anything. I know we have teaching standards, but what we're talking about is when they're bringing in outside resources, that as individual teachers, to support that, 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 that needs to be looked at, I think, is the issue that we're talking about.
Right.
It's just not part of a program that's already approved, and it's, you know, out on the, you know, the internet, that they're bringing something in. It looks good, but it just needs to be scrutinized, I think, a little bit more than normal.
Yes.
Well, and just another, another point of interest here too, is that, so this is a family consumer science course, right? And then childhood development is in it. So in the description, it's childhood development from infancy to adolescence. There is a part of it that does cover like pregnancy and the trimesters of pregnancies and things like that. But under family consumer sciences, it's kind of like, it just seems like it, why is it under that category? Because who would think family consumer sciences? Would you think about like, you know, how to run a house and how to do things, you know, like, it just, it just seemed odd. It just seemed like an odd place for that.
I can't tell you how.
The home ec days of 1950.
Yes, yeah.
It's really frustrating then to go back and look, because it comes up as family consumer science. And I kept thinking I was doing something wrong when I was searching, because I was thinking to myself, this has nothing to do, one has nothing to do with the other, and they are completely combined.
So that's a program that's under that, that category. So what Mrs. Vecchio is doing is going back to the standards to see what is the intent of the standards? And how does that align? And I'm, I'm very curious to see, I mean, it doesn't matter really where it's at, but it makes more sense that, you know, conception and fertilization of the egg is part of a health class, you know, type of a thing, where this class, really, the description of the class actually sounds like it's from infancy through adolescence. And it's, it's written that way several times in the description of the course. So to take that deeper look, I mean, it might not even need to be, that part of it might not need to be in that program at all. And it actually could be in another, another program, you know? So, but what parent might think, okay, you know, it's childhood development. Why would they be talking about, you know, and showing some of the things that were in that video? Go look at the video and you'll see what's in it. And some parents might not feel that that's really appropriate for their, I don't care if they're in 12th grade, you know?
And my response to, to the group, I, you know, a simple Google search, if you just look up child development courses at any high school do include a unit on conception and pregnancy. So perhaps it's, you're correct though. I, I, I think that description, that course, you know, maybe the description, just that we've updated the descriptions of courses many times, because they weren't clear on what they include. But I do appreciate Dr. Grasek pointing out that like, you know, no one was trying to hide anything. It was very transparent, and through that transparency is where we got a couple of conversation. And I just wanted to affirm that I, you know, I personally don't have an issue with the choice, despite the shot there. My parenting choices, I would approve it, except for the one portion that I recommended. We were also told too, that only a portion of this 50-minute video, which we know no teacher is taking 50 minutes in class to show this. I think we could guess that what was shown was very appropriate for the age given.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Moving on to technology, Ms. Pollock.
I have nothing new for tonight.
All right, thank you. Personnel, Mrs. Hov.
Thank you. Item 10.2, recommend the board approve the following leave of absence. Employee 1492, family medical leave effective May 26th, not to exceed 60 workdays.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 10.3, recommend the board ratify the employment of the following classified staff, Larry Nagy, custodian.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zekr. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Recommend the, item 10.4, recommend the board approve the employment of the following athletic staff, James Chase, volunteer coach, and Sean Abram, volunteer coach.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 10.5, recommend the board approve the employment of the following extended school year staff as listed below.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Zekr. Any question on the motion?
Do we know yet how many students are, are going to attend?
Students qualify for that. I don't have the number with me. I can get it off of Dr. Pollock. It's all addressed through the IMP.
Thank you.
Any other question on the motions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection.
Item 10.6, recommend the board accept with regret the resignation of the following staff, Lisa Midman, bus aide.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Zekr. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote.
Item 10.7, recommend the board approve the employment of the following technology department summer workers, Craig Varga and Landon Underwood.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Questions on the motion?
I thought we had discussed $10 an hour versus the $12. We are going to give the, um, is it the lunch monitors? I want to get that wrong.
Yeah, right here.
You know, going to get a raise to make $11 an hour. And we're going to pay students in the summer $12 an hour. Just saw some disparity there.
There was mention that there wasn't any action taken on the board to change.
No, there wasn't. It was just, you know, we talked about it, and then we'd talk about it again when the vote came up. And here it is.
That's what I'm saying. If there's a interest in making that change.
Oh, I get where you're coming from on that, but, you know, looking at it, it's, it's two kids and it's only for a month, really. And I, I get where you're coming from, I agree, but for, for that month, I'd like to see, encourage the kids to, to take the job and to, to, you know, to, to actually that they applied and are working, you know?
Right.
So I, I think it's.
Yeah, we did get the applicants thinking they were going to make $10. You know, yes, I mean, I don't disagree, $12 is nice. I'm just trying to show, you know, if we're going to raise one to $11, or we're going to have this at $12. And, you know, I don't care if it's for one hour or 360 hours or whatever. It's just, you know, when I see that difference in, in the rates, it's just, we're getting, giving a $2 an hour raise to that. And other contracts have not shown that much of an increase for a year or whatever.
Yeah, I understand as well, and I agree with Mrs. Vecker's thinking on that. And I think I voiced that as well last week, that to me, it was the difference of the time. Well, one, and I think we did confirm that the actual salary, I don't know what we should call it, that stipend really, wasn't actually listed, I think, when we put out the job posting, or was it?
It was specifically worded anticipate $12.
Oh, so. So it was advertised 12. So they applied thinking it was going to be 12. And like, like it's, I think you have to make it, like, if it's $12 an hour for only, what, 20 hours a week, for four weeks? And I, I just think it's apples to kiwis, like, it's, you know, for a long-term position. I think we get into that a lot, where we pay this person, I would pay that person that, but it, I don't, I don't think it can.
Why was it advertised at anticipated $12 when it had never come before the board?
Right, that's what I wanted to ask.
We oftentimes will advertise anticipated, it doesn't mean it's going to happen. It's even with full-time positions, if we anticipate something, we'll put that out there to anticipate.
I think that's very. Still, why didn't it come to the board first, so that then this wouldn't have happened?
Right, right, right.
It was in my update before the meeting. I sent it to you again, if you'd like. It was that it was $10 the previous year, we're recommending $12. So it was put out there. I didn't see a need to have a special meeting on increasing this. And the board does set the rate. So even though we anticipated something, or would like to have something, you all reserve the right to say, no, we're keeping it at $10.
At this point, I, I mean, again, I think.
Expecting 12.
Yeah, and I, we do have the option to turn this down and leave it at the current rate.
Are they expecting $12?
Say, if it's anticipated, I would think I'm going to get 12.
I have contacted them, and I informed them that there is a good chance it would be 10. I haven't heard a reply.
I think we just move ahead with the motion, and if you do not want to make that change, we build it down.
I think we need to change the practice of putting on an anticipated salary.
I would agree that that's typically not something we do all, that I've ever seen.
I was going to say, I don't think we should ever do it.
All right.
Thank you for your response.
Any other question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Please enter your vote selection. Next item.
Item 10.8, recommend the board approve increases for cafeteria lunch aids and bus monitors to $11 effective April 15th, 2025. What were they getting paid?
$10.30.
$10.50.
$30.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rinaldi. Any question on the motion? I'm sorry.
Again, they're going to get a 80 cents an hour increase, where our tech workers are going to get a $2 increase. And that's all I'm going to say.
Yes.
Any other discussion or?
If you're out my feelings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion in the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your votes selection.
Item 10.9, recommend the board approve the first reading of the following job descriptions.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moretti. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your votes selection.
Item 10.10, recommend the board approve the following independent volunteers, 24 to 25 school years listed below.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Moretti. Any question on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, motion passed. Please enter your vote. Okay. This time we'll move on to emergency management, Mrs. Sarno, if you would.
Just two quick, uh, things to mention that on May 28th, the PSBA is hosting a complimentary webinar on safety and security board reports. Um, and I will be busy volunteering at Dynamo Day that day. But, um, Mrs. Moretti, who loves attending webinars and meetings and conferences, is so graciously going to attend that, um, so that we can support our administrators on the emergency management committee to, um, help with that effort, uh, for the safety and security board report. And just to note that, um, I do believe Mr. Heffner was planning this for every time I'm in the building, there is a drill. Um, I was there yesterday and this time I got to experience a fire drill. And, um, so that this time was with the alarms going off and everything happening. And once again, like, I'll tell you what, if we ever do have any kind of, and God forbid we do not, but, uh, any kind of situation where we need to evacuate, I'll tell you what, those kids could teach adults how to do it. It was really, um, very smooth and amazing to see as always. Um, again, how, interesting how much it's changed since we were home kids. So, um, kudos to the whole team. Um, you know, I've, I've now experienced, I think, four drills this year in both buildings and, um, all different kinds. And, um, shipshape, yeah.
It is quite impressive if you happen to be here during one of them. So, uh, if you ever do have an opportunity, uh, it is, uh, pretty interesting to watch how things.
It is, it is, yeah.
And, uh, while they do respond, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on, athletics and student activities, Mrs. Reynolds.
Excuse me, no report.
No report, thank you. Policy and legislative affairs, Mrs. Moretti.
Thank you, Mr. Plino. Um, I saw in the latest PSBA, um, communication that was sent out. There's a letter in there. It's a form letter to send to your legislators and it will go to the governor, I think the assistant governor, um, Representative Mandy Steele and Representative Lindsay Williams. And it's, um, agreeing with PSBA with the, it's mandate. The word escaped my head. And it's because the state puts these mandates on the school and the school is then tasked with funding, most of it, if not all of it. So what this letter is doing is trying to get our legislation to look at it and say, you know what? Either lessen the mandates or we come up with some funding for these mandates. And it's, it's a very simple thing. You just put in your name, your address and your telephone number and email and this letter goes out. You get this nice little email back. Thank you for, for reaching out. And I do think that's something that the board should consider, not as a whole, but individually, um, doing because of the impact it does have to the budget. And, you know, it's cumbersome for administration to find a place for the mandate, for the teacher to take time away from teaching their course to meet this mandate. So I think it all piles together and, you know, take the time to read the latest PSBA communication and, do what you will.
Mrs. Moretti, I do know the term you're referring to and it's one that gets all of our blood pressure going through the roof. So I'm going to say softly unfunded mandates.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. And the word is like, I came with fund.
It's ridiculous.
You know, but then it's like, yeah, it, it's very hard and taxing to our budget to meet these mandates that we'll come up with. Uh, under 10.2, policy review, recommend the board approve the first reading of the policies listed below. Policy 105 curriculum and policy 709.1, school police officers.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thinking by Mrs. Zekker. Any question on the floor?
I do have a couple of questions and I apologize, Mrs. Moretti, I wasn't able to respond to your email today, but I said I was going to bring them up today anyway. Again, thank you for your very copiousness, your very long meetings that you all have. I had a couple of questions and I apologize because I did not take the time to go back and listen to the recording or read the minutes. I couldn't remember which meeting it was when we first spoke about this. But I, if I recall, I feel like there was not consensus, but general feelings from the board that rather than entertain a full draft even of a, like, that we just wanted more information. We wanted more examples from what other school districts is. And then I was surprised to see like a fully written out draft for consideration like last, I don't know. And again, I could be mistaken on that. I felt the feeling that we were like, but I remember I remember thinking like, yeah, like, I don't even think we're ready for a draft. I think we just still need to see like what other schools do.
We're talking about the first.
I, oh, I was, yeah, thank you for the clarification. Yes, we're talking about the curriculum. Yeah.
The, the problem I have with that one is the last paragraph. Um, I, I think if there could be notification, if it was to remove something, uh, from the premises, I think that's something that, you know, notification. But, um, for board member to come in and ask to see something and have to have a written request or, uh, I believe it said something like that in there. Let me look at this here. Um, yeah, submit a written or electronic request, um, in a specific timeframe to review material, I think is a little restrictive, um, on the board that, that hadn't been in place prior to this. Um, I do agree that, that may be, uh, if, if you plan on taking a book or curriculum or something offsite, that you're going to be responsible, which is addressed in the, uh, in the policy. Uh, but I do have a concern there, um, because it's, again, limiting what the board can have access. Well, you know, I come in, I wanted to see whatever it is, um, just to be able to review it or whatever. Um, and now I have to put written or electronic request in and wait for a response from the administration. Uh, and I know that we're all busy, but again, I think it should be the right of the board to be able to look at whatever that may be, um, curriculum, um, you know? Uh, if there's a documentation on, you know, with the finances or whatever it may be. Um, I'm a little concerned about the last paragraph on that one.
Yeah, under the authority, um.
Cause we never had anything in place before, so there was no guidelines.
Well, we went with what the parents had to do.
And, and we're not, I mean, we're not necessarily.
Right, and that's what, yeah, that's why we recommended adding things. So we did go to other school districts and had all their policies. And I must've had from 10 different school districts, you know, their policies. Um, and most of them did, well, all of them did have, you know, like you, out of courtesy to the administration, you give them a timeframe, something like within the next month, you know? Is it okay if I come in and these are the materials I'm looking for? Rather than, I know, you know, Mrs. Ecker has, has reviewed policy or curriculum before. And Mrs. Vecchio was very thorough. She had a, a rolling cart with everything you could possibly think of. So rather than having the admin go through.
I understand that, but at the same time, you don't have a timeframe on there and you don't, uh, when you, within a month's time, we have meetings. And if there's something I want to see, you know, prior to meeting and maybe something came up last minute, I, you know, I, I believe the board members, you know, should be able to request. You know, obviously, you, you don't want to just, you know, saddle them with so many requests that they're not doing their job. But we have to be reasonable, I think, on the role of the board. I mean, you're, you, that is our role to oversee everything.
Right. We, as a committee, we felt we didn't want any board member to just walk in the business office and say, well, I want to see X, Y, Z. You know, like make it reasonable, like contact them. Is it okay if I come in tomorrow or, you know, it's Monday, can I come in by Friday? And see, this is what I'm looking for. Now, many times they can respond to your email just by a phone call or an email.
And, and I understand.
So that's why we put, put a specific timeframe. Tell, tell the admin what timeframe you're looking at and tell the admin what you're looking for.
If I may, my quibbles with it are different, although I'm glad you brought that up. But, um, so there's that point to it. And then, yeah, I feel like when it was posed to us, like the fear was that like any current or future board members could just come in demanding to see things. But then there was also like the concerns about what they would do with those materials. And then this gives them the ability to take things home. I think if you have a policy where you feel the need to say, hey, don't copy and use these for political controversial or malicious reasons, I think you know that that's why they're probably taking them home. So I'm very, very concerned that we would like allow that really. Like, I think, you know, I think what we were trying to, if I remember, like the, both of us and like, I think Mr. Conkey like made comment about it, but like, there isn't a written policy because, yeah, I think that a board member should be able to, within reason, say, I would like to see this and see it, whether it's at that moment or later. And then, but I do think they should still be done, like they're in person with the materials because I think things can be taken out of context and context and used in different ways. So that was more of my concern is that like.
I agree with that. It, it, I, I guess what I'm looking at, and that's why I said, if that content's going to, I don't have a problem saying it has to be written or whatever.
Yeah.
But the administration can go back to the board, uh, board president or vice president and, you know, say there's a concern they're, they're abusing their ability to come in and just review things.
Yeah.
And then the board and, and it could, you know, solicit response from the board to say, hey, we do not want you to be doing this or you're abusing your privilege or, but, but have things in writing. What you're doing is you're restricting your ability to, you know, in the timeframe you have to look at and, and, and you're looking at it from one point of view, like using it for something that is bad. And I'm looking at it from something that I don't want to restrict my ability to come in and, and ask, well, I want to see more detail on this thing that we're voting on.
Yeah.
It would fall into that category as well.
I think it could be right either way. I, that's the thing with it. I think it's, I think there's just, and I, I do have another question about the grant question. I do want to get to that, but like, I guess that's my thing. We, we do a lot of things as a board, especially in our conversations with our administrators, with our liaisons, that like we don't have written procedures for because it's like, we're on a board. We act professionally. You send emails and you ask questions and you pick up the phone and you call. And like, I think there's a reason why we don't have everything that we do written down in a step-by-step format. Because I think some situations require, like, require flexibility. So I, I agree with you. I think it could be seen either way as very restrictive or as incredibly loose. I think anybody with kind of a bad or inappropriate intent could take how this is written and kind of go off the rails. I feel like it's coming from, because we do have a board member who, very frankly so, wants to look over everything and has felt a little restricted and wants to take things home. And I think there's a good reason for why that's not done. And I think we're just, I don't know, to me, it's like, we don't have a lot of policies about how the board interacts with our administrators. It's, it's, there are things we talk about as our team of 10 in exec session and in setting our board norms. But you said that's the role of the superintendent and the board president to make sure people are like acting appropriately. And I just don't know that like we have to have a policy for it. You know what I mean?
I think, I mean, I, I, again, I'm not against having some guidelines or expectations that are set in there. It's just that, um, uh, again, uh, I, I think removing something of all force, hey, that's written, it's traceable and all that. You know, what's tough about it is we don't have a, uh, administration or a board that, I mean, in my viewpoint, it's abusing anything.
No, not at all.
And they're very receptive to all the things we've done. Um, that's not always the case. And I'm looking more down the road. You could have people in, they come in with an agenda and we, we still need to protect the administration to some point. But at the same time, it could be an administration, you know, is overbearing or overcontrolling. So you don't know what the future's going to be. So you've got to be careful when you put different restrictions.
And these are the exact conversations that the policy committee had. I mean, Dr. Grace, it probably went through a notebook and a half.
Still got a more dozen.
And that's why certain verbiage is put in there, like upon prior approval, you could remove something. Meaning if the, the administrative, well, the superintendent may say, well, you cannot take this, this and this. A textbook is a textbook. You can get that anywhere, you know? So if somebody takes a textbook and takes something out of it, so be it. There's no, do that.
But the way it's written here.
That's why it'd be upon prior approval.
Yeah, so let me, let me weigh in a little bit here. Maybe I can help because I think we're weaving in some things that should be separated. So if we are going to adopt a textbook, everyone here has the right and opportunities to review them. We are talking about things that have already been approved. So if something's already been approved, we need to know what that is so that we can get it for you. In terms of the timeline, it is helpful to know, hey, I'd like to see it by Friday so that I can talk to Jen or I can talk to the principal or the teacher and say, we need a copy of this by Friday. Um, it's meant to be, the, the intent was to be that simple. But if we were talking about a textbook, like when we adopted CK LA, those are on public display. They are accessible to every board member so that you have what you need to vote on. We're not talking about items that we're voting on. We're talking about items that we want to learn more about. Um, therefore, we can't simply go to a classroom and take the teacher's manual or a book. Or if something's copyrighted, we at least need to be able to say, Mr. Plino, it's copyrighted. You can't take it out of the building. So that was the intent, but that's also the advantage of having a first and second reading. So whatever suggestions you have to temper that, I took notes down. When we meet next Wednesday, we'll keep working on it. So I just.
Yeah.
And again, I just wanted to bring that to light and appreciate you that.
Well, I, I, I just want to go, like, that was, in the very beginning, that's exactly what I said, was that we're board members, we have certain expectations and standards, just like you do as a superintendent, just like everybody does in a professional realm. Of course, there are expectations and standards if I want to take something home and look at it. And I can tell you, I've been looking at textbooks for a long time and I've taken them out of this school 20 years ago. And there was no problem as a parent to come in and look and to be able to take something out and, and bring it back. I mean, it was, you're, to say that a board member is bringing something home from malicious intent? Wow. I mean, that's quite a statement. I, I.
I, it's in the policy. That's why I'm just like, whoa. Like when I read that, I was like.
That's what was brought up to the, to the committee.
We're showing you.
Well, what if a board member would do something? And I'm like, well, why would a board member do that? We're here for a purpose and, and, and to be a part of, of a, a committee to make things better for the district. And we're not here for malicious intent. So to say that, like, we had to, we thought we needed to put that in there to protect the district.
Yeah.
So.
I think if you look at what's going on in other school boards, that is what's happening in other school boards. I mean.
Okay, well, then that's, and that's happening in the world today, I guess. Then do we need, then that's why it was put in there. But originally, what I'm saying is that I think we, we trusted each other. There was trust amongst the board members taking material and bringing it back. And in fact, some of this was taken out of, was in reference to policy 708. And it was just talking about like school materials, other like physical pieces of, you know, school, um, items. And you could bring them home, but you had to sign for it and bring it back. So it's like, if you could do that with, um, a camera or this or that, certainly a board member could do that with, you know, material that they're looking at to approve or to understand, you know?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I, I guess my question is like, when you wanted to review things, did you run into a hurdle? Like, cause our whole thing was like, well, there's no. no policy. But like, not having a policy didn't keep you from getting to review materials? Like, I wouldn't think it would keep any of us, like, like, no one was like, oh, I'm sorry, there's no policy, therefore you cannot review these materials, right?
Right. I think we're looking at moving into the future. You know, right now, we do have a very good administration, superintendent that works with everybody, you know. We have a good board.
And trustworthy board members.
Right. And a board that works together, you know. But then when we think, well, you know, what will the future bring? You know, the world is constantly changing, the, the changes in our country's leadership and everything, you know, you don't know what's going to happen. So we're trying to protect everybody without tying your hands, you know. So that's why I think we, we worked hard. We put together a first draft for this exact reason, you know, to get more input, you know, and maybe some of it, you know, like the, the idea of taking things out, you know, should that say you can only take a textbook out, you know, because that's something you could take out.
And remember.
And just, yeah.
The reason that this came to the board was because I wanted to come in and just review some of the books, thinking I could come in and just have my time. And I had 105.1 put in front of me and I felt that I was taking time from the administration, that they had to be with me in the room. That policy had nothing to do with the board. So that's how this whole thing kind of rolled into what's happening. Right.
So, I mean, at this point, it needs to go back in the committees and to do that. Any.
Well, as long as we're throwing rocks.
As a segue that Mary Ellen's got, but to say that the material can't be used for political controversial reasons, I'm not sure what that even means.
Right. It's words that we came up with and it was going to come to you.
I'm just saying, I mean, if a board member sees something in school materials that they want to raise that causes a controversy because there's disagreement, I, I just don't get that statement.
Yeah. My last question had to do with the, I felt this was, like, I was like, was this a typo or like, was it supposed to be somewhere else about the possible sources of state federal grants? Like, it, it says at the bottom, the board is to be kept informed of all possible sources of state federal grants, state federal comma grant. I don't know what that means. Another, another fund, okay, another funding for the support of the schools. The superintendent or designated to, is to apprise the board of its eligibility for general or program funding and to make recommendations for board action. Like, you mean, grants and funding related to curriculum and programming? And like, who is supposed to be knowledgeable about every single possible grant that's out there? Like, I was like so thrown by that and why that's in there and that.
It was in there to let the board know, we wouldn't approve going after the grant. We would just know this grant was applied for.
But why is it in this policy about curriculum?
Because it has to do with curriculum. You know, the, the grant would align with curriculum.
We don't know about grants now, but unless they told us.
For example, I think one of our teachers just had a grant, Verizon, you know, the Verizon grant that, you know, was received by a teacher and Verizon came in and videoed and stuff. I, as a board member, would have liked to have known, we went for that grant and we got that grant and how grateful our school. You know, not that I'm saying anybody is doing anything wrong in going after the, you go after money when you can. And, you know, as a district, you're always looking for that extra funding. So it's just apprising the board, hey, you know, teacher X saw this grant for this program and, you know, it's been okayed by administration. We're just letting the board know, you know, that we applied for this. And then we love the good news that, hey, we got this grant, you know, we got this million dollar grant to, you know, spend how we want, you know, and.
To me, that's a whole other policy.
You know, I mean, it's just the ones to do with.
So why are you changing the verbiage from, it's there for?
What was, there wasn't anything there.
What was crossed out then?
Okay, I'm looking at something.
The portion that was crossed out says, the board encourages where it is feasible and in the best interest of district students' participation in state initiated pilot programs of educational research. And then the board directs the superintendent to pursue actively state and federal aid in support of research activities. So those were removed. And then instead, this portion about grants, although it doesn't specify like grants for curriculum or education, like, to me, I totally get that reason. I just think that's a whole separate policy.
Yeah, I agree with putting that in there. I think with the, the state or federal grants, there was some discussion about that that we had.
There was. We talked about so many things. I'm drawing a blank now. I, what I'm taking from this is, let's go back to the drawing board. That's why we do. I mean, that's why we talk about these. So, we need to go back to the drawing board.
So with that said, takes that portion off. Your choices are to approve this as a first reading if you have the ability to make changes before you finalize the policy. Or if you prefer, you could table it and, you know, ask the committee to take a second step and look at it and then bring it up for a first reading.
Mr. Roffner, are we under any obligation, if we would just, to keep things moving, approve the first reading? Do we have to and may then come back with a second reading or could it be at a later?
It could be at a later time. But again, then there's only one time to be on. And if you.
That's one of your choices.
You either approve this as a first read, there are going to be changes, or table it and bring it back for a first reading.
Depending on how long it takes. I mean, I think, my personal opinion is I'd like to see the removal of that one and then take it to first reading again once it's redone because it is, there is so much discussion on it, rather than putting it in and now, you know, we got to make a decision on this because it's the second reading.
Yeah. And that was kind of amazing, too. I thought we need to see this and have more discussion, I guess. And of course, you know, I know, and I know you guys have discussed it at length, but before it came up for a first reading and the second reading that it's approved and it's like.
So can I make a motion then?
We would, under the question, we can make a motion to remove item, the first item and approve that first and then go back and vote on the first motion.
Has a motion made on this? I lost track.
Yeah, we did. There was a motion.
Those motions, yeah.
Let, I would suggest a motion to amend by removing policy 105 from the motion.
And we'll entertain that motion if somebody's.
Make a motion to, to table policy 105 first reading for a later date, removing it from the original motion.
The motion on the table, you have to amend that.
Okay.
If you want to proceed with the second half of it.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, but you could give Dr. Grayson.
Just a motion.
Just tell us what you want it to be.
To amend, to remove policy 105 curriculum from the motion. So all you need to do, we have a motion by Mrs. Murray to approve policy 105 from the recommended motion. We have a second by Mrs. Ecker. Any question on the motion?
Yes, I appreciate you all. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Now, you can cast your vote on the original motion, which now only encompasses retiring policy 709.1.
So this will be, we have any other questions on the second? That said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's happened. Motion passed.
Your, your input is truly, truly appreciated by the policy committee. So I guess we can have breakfast, lunch, and possibly a, an early dinner.
Bring all the grain.
We do appreciate all your work.
Bring them all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other items under policy?
No, that concludes policy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll open the floor to any discussion items. It is time for the board member.
I just want to ask the question. Yesterday, the, I don't know if they use a PA system or what they do in Acme, it wasn't working. We had to sit out with buses about 10 to 15 minutes till they got all the kids out because they, they, it wasn't working.
I was there when that was happening. I think, I believe Centegix and perhaps other contractors were on site at both buildings yesterday and they think that that may have affected it because they were testing things. Because I was in the office whenever people were scrambling around and getting their bull horns out to go. And then they started like literally screaming down the hallways like, you know, parent pickup or whatever.
We, I didn't see any.
I saw them inside the buildings. I saw them in both buildings several times and places. I think that's, and that, that's just they said, oh, maybe something.
Maybe.
Happened with that. Was it working today then?
Yeah, we are trying.
Yeah, but if it was an emergency, nobody would have heard.
Yeah.
Again, I think that's why you have people come out the hallway.
Yeah, but, yeah.
They weren't prepared for that either.
Well.
I don't think they knew until they went to make the announcements that it wasn't working, test the PAs.
It was dismissal time for afternoon.
Yeah. I think it wasn't until they went to call for parent pickup that they realized it wasn't working. And then they were scrambling, getting bull horns and running down the hallways shouting.
Thank you. Any other discussion items, comments?
I have one thing. The open house that we changed from the community night to the conferences and stuff, if we could have some feedback, you know, on how that went, you know, were there a lot of parents that did attend the schedules? I know a lot of teachers did have Zoom meetings with parents, which was so good to hear that they did that. So just a little, you know, feedback on how that all went.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You know, I have something I'd like to pass along. Maybe, maybe Humsey, you can give us. I read a thing in the, one of the PSBA reports on the nurses are now responsible for tick removal and something with diabetes. There was a, an article. I'll try to dig it back up. But the nurses have to remove ticks now. Did you know that? Did you hear about that? Anyway, I've got this really cool thing and I just want you to pass it around. And I thought, if Amy wanted to even take a peek at this, maybe we could buy like bulk and use it. It's a, it's a tick remover. It's a tick key. Has anybody ever seen it?
I have two dogs.
You got that?
I do.
They're like the most awesome things. I think our school nurse needs to have one. So whatever.
I'd like one for like a parent night.
Oh.
No, not that.
It's for my grandson.
I don't know. They just really, really work and.
Do you order them or how do you get them?
Yes.
There's a variety of them out there. The boys usually order them.
But like, I'm telling you what, you put that thing on it.
Because they're.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Our crank is a plain New York.
Any other items or comments? Saying none, we'll open the floor to any community members here that would like to make a comment or saying none.
I will take all responsibility for that.
One, it's saying a motion to adjourn.
Who made that motion?
Second?
Second, yeah.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, everybody have a wonderful Easter.
Happy Easter.
Thank you.